To record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. All right, so we're going to call to order our meeting. First, I will call to order the Chatham Select Board and then I'll turn it over to you, Mark, to call to order the park commissioners, the Orleans Park Commissioners. Okay, call to order. Board member Kokolos.
Present.
Board member Nacastro.
Present.
Board member Matters.
He's not. He has a conflict.
Oh, he did, okay, I didn't realize that. Board member Dykens.
Present.
And the chair is present. We'd like to welcome to this meeting, it is a joint meeting. We are hosting it this evening, the Orleans Park Commissioners slash Orleans Select Board. And I'd like to introduce Mark Matheson, who is the Chair of the Park Commissioners, and he'll call his side of the meeting to order.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call to order the Park Commissioners for the Town of Orleans. Please signify your presence by saying, stating your name. Kevin, what's that with you?
Hi, Kevin Galligan. Matt, if anyone here?
Andrea? Andrea, sorry?
Yeah, I'm trying to get it unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yep, yes, we can.
Great, great, thanks.
Okay. And I would like to note also, I, Mark Matheson. Present. And we have Nate Sears with us, who is our Director of Natural Resources. And I think John Kelly is here.
Yes.
Yep, John Kelly is here as well, our town administrator.
Okay, as a note, thank you very much and welcome, Mark. I'd like to acknowledge that our town manager Jill Goldsmith is on, attending the meeting this evening, as well as our Director of Natural Resources, Dr. Bob Dunkinson, and our Conservation Agent, Paul Whitman. So, we're all present and accounted for. I'm going to ask that any public participants that are in the audience tonight, to please mute your, mute your audio. And I have one order of business that wasn't included before we get started, Mark. We did not include, it's an omission in our, our meeting that we have no public comment listed. And I was hoping that you would be okay, that we accept public comment at the, prior to our discussion, as we do in our regular meetings. And call for that comment period to happen with your boards. Okay.
Sure, as, you know, this is your meeting and we have no problem with entertaining. Sure, thank you.
Okay, so what we'll do before we start our discussion is, we've called to order our joint meeting, and at this point, if there's any members of the public that would like to speak about the, our reason for being here, which is a discussion and vote on the terms of our Nassau Beach Agreement that expires on April 30th, 2021, we'd appreciate your comments now. And before we went into our own internal business discussion. So, if you want to raise your hand or speak out, I'll acknowledge you in the order in which you either raise your hand or speak out. Anybody want to make a comment? Okay, I don't see anybody. I think everybody's here to listen this evening. Okay. All right. So, we are here, as we are every year, to, or we have in the past year, we've been doing our agreement in, from last year, as a one-year increment, to talk about the Nassau Beach Agreement. I know that your, Mark, that your commissioners had had some discussion on what you are looking at presently, as far as structure. And I just was wondering if you could give us a little overview of that, before we get started in our discussion. And then we'll turn to our staff for that same discussion. Go ahead.
Sure, thank you. So, a few things that we have been struggling with this past several months, as we look at your overall budgets of the town, and then we get specifically to our beaches and natural resource management areas, was trying to get a handle on some of the, the expenses that we are incurring as we provide services to both citizens and to visitors in the town. So, one of the areas that we've looked at, and I think you may have seen some of our discussions, or some of the, the documents generated from those discussions, perhaps, was the creation of enterprise funds, where we would be able to clearly delineate both income and expenses for a particular program. In the past, we've kind of run things like the water department as, as an enterprise fund. We are looking at doing the same thing for our landfill, we're looking at doing the same thing for our moorings and for beaches. So, the purpose of that is just to clearly identify all of the, the components that would make up running whatever that particular enterprise might be. So, in the case of, of the beaches, and the over sand vehicle operations of the beaches, we're just trying to look at and get a clear picture of what exactly it costs us for running a program that includes the personnel and the salaries and the benefits paid to those people. It includes the equipment that's, that's bought and insured and replaced every year or few years, or whatever it might be. All of the incidentals that would be on the expense side, and then any revenues coming in. And by looking at those things, we know what it actually truly costs to provide some kind of service, and then we can make decisions on how much of that we want to subsidize through our general tax rate with all the taxpayers in town paying for it, and how much we would perhaps want to put into a fee structure that would help to support that particular enterprise, based on the users of that service, of that, that enterprise. So, in light of having all those discussions, you know, we looked at where we were with running the over sand vehicle program for Nassau Beach, and running that in partnership with the Town of Chatham. And I think one of the things we, we were looking at, and we're kind of right now in limbo, in that we have, as a select board, looked at raising fees for many of the components of our beach program, one of them being the, the fee for a resident sticker for the over sand vehicle program in Orleans, and also raising the fees for a non-resident sticker for the over sand vehicles. And that's something that is going to go to our town meeting in May. So, we won't know the answer to the question of will our citizens support raising the fees, as opposed to absorbing more of the cost in the general tax rate or not. So, it kind of leaves us in limbo in terms of trying to have something, an agreement that's up and running and ratified between the two towns by, by May 1st. But it's something that we wanted to have a discussion with the Town of Chatham about in terms of how perhaps we can continue our arrangement for one more year, which would then give us an opportunity to really collect as much information and data as, as we need, so that we can then put together a, a program that's truly a joint venture between Chatham and Orleans to manage a, a resource as, as partners in, in that resource that we are. I think, I remember many years, I'm sure most of you do too, that for many years, we had long-term agreements that, that practice kind of went by the wayside when we had major disruptions to the beach caused by Mother Nature, caused by storms and, and changes in, in patterns of erosion and deposition and whatnot. And so, it became such a volatile resource that we started doing, I think, the one-year deals, just to try and, and deal with realities as they, as they changed from year to year. So, that's kind of been the framework of the debate and the discussion that we had in Orleans, as the, how we can get a handle on this thing, be in true partnership with, with Chatham for a long-term management plan for the, for the resource, and something that makes it fair in terms of both costs and revenues for the two towns. You know, we're certainly willing to, as I said, do things that are, that are fair, and, and just recognize that we have to manage this resource together and be partners in this in order to make it work. So, that's kind of where we are with our discussions with you tonight, to see what your thoughts are, and where you'd like to go, and how you'd like to proceed with this.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your comments on this. I, I think we're not, I think we're pretty much on the same page as far as looking at this in, in a more in-depth scenario. Are you suggesting that perhaps that we extend the period of this present agreement right now to, let's say, six months down the road, or, or nine, or till next year? Is that what you're proposing, Mark? Did I understand you correctly?
I thi, I, yes, I think so. I think, you know, that we would, I think a one-year agreement was something that we had talked about in terms of making sense for us with, I think, the understanding that we have seen, I think, a much more collaboration this year, that, that, you know, we're, we're looking at just how we can better manage the resource, and having our natural resource people from both towns involved in the process, and, and, you know, helping us as the governing bo, or the, you know, the bodies in town that would be making some decisions, the select boards of both towns, helping us to put together something that can be a more long-term and sustainable arrangement, so that we don't have to worry about trying to scramble at the, at the last minute, you know, year to year to year, to try and, and put something together. So, yeah, we were looking at a one-year, extending this agreement for one year with whatever modifications we want to make tonight, in terms of, of revenues, and how we can share data, and, and just, you know, using between our natural resource people, the same, the same systems and the same measurements, and, and the same understandings of how we can collect data that's meaningful to all of us, in order to, to make this, this whole operation run smoothly and be fair to the taxpayers and fair to the users. So, we were kind of looking at one year, and then utilizing that time to, to put together the, kind of the nuts and bolts operation of, of our resource people, our natural resource people and yours, being the ones that actually can formulate a plan for, you know, gathering the, the information that we need, and, and helping to, to manage the beach together. And, you know, I think in the past, I'll be blunt, in the past, there have been some of those moments where it's, it's kind, you know, we've kind of almost been looking at it as adversarial in some ways. And we, from the Town of Orleans, want to not have it as an adversarial thing. We want it to be a partnership thing, and just look at, how can we, how can we manage this resource, because it's so important to both towns? So, we, we want to truly put together some way of, of working together on this, so we're all on the same page at the same time and in the same place.
That's great, and I think maybe you were thinking of another board that might have been a more adversarial experience. Prior to my experiences here, but we won't go there. I, I think we're all, have the same heart, when it comes to what we're looking for here. Is there, and I, and I like, I like, and we'll hear from my board and your board on, on, on this, but I, I do like this going forward. Wasn't, wasn't there a discussion prior to COVID that we've talked about maybe having selectmen or select board member representation on that planning, like a subcommittee that would break out from each town, meet with staff, and make sure that there's not only accountability going forward, but the board has its own accountability in the process? And perhaps that, that we do it in that way, working in tandem with our resource departments to start to put together a plan that we could come back at, and maybe that takes a few meetings throughout the summer, but we can come back in the fall and say, you know what, I think we've ironed out a good, a good plan between the two, between the two towns, and present it back that way. For tonight, perhaps, we could talk about some of the, what that would look like, what we would be interested in finding out, to be better informed. But I, I, I take, you know, I'm just, we're just two chairs talking here, I think we have to hear from the rest of our folks, and, and maybe start to formulate, if we are in agreement, formulating a timeline, and maybe some objectives to that, that end result, if that's the route that everybody wants to go. So, if anybody from my board would like to weigh in at this time, I'm interested in hearing from them, to see how they feel about going forward in this manner. Go ahead, Jeff, and then Peter.
Yeah, thanks, Shereen, Madam Chair. I'm not opposed to extending this agreement for a year. The only thing I kind of ask is that if we want to gather data, that, that we decide what data we want, what's meaningful, as we jointly manage the beach and, and a joint venture into our partnership, as been, as was described by, by Mark, and that we have a timetable where we come back, you know, four, five, six months from now, and sit down and, and see what we've got, what kind of data we have, and where it leads us, so that we're not having this conversation again at the end of April, that the 11th hour next year, that's all. And that we do truly come to an agreement where we think we, we can jointly manage it, that, and, and divvy up the funds in a fair, you know, a fair manner, based on utilization, that, that, that the only, the only reluctance I have with a longer-term agreement, and though, we did, we did used to have long-term agreements, three to five years, if I recollect, but, is that the beach changes, you know, changes so rapidly, it, so, you know, just with a caveat in any agreement, that, you know, things change so rapidly that, you know, we need to meet, then we have the ability to meet, because Mother Nature has a mind of her own, especially on that outer beach, as we all well know. But I'm not opposed to, to extend, to, to one-year extension with, with an agreement, with an understanding at least, or even baked into the agreement, that we get together October, November, whenever we have the data, and that we really do set about crafting a, a longer-term agreement, and keep our feet to the fire, whether that takes some, some members of the boards of selectmen, or, you know, one or two of us sitting on the, on the subcommittee, that, that's fine too, but, that's the only thing I, I would ask. And that we get, that we understand what data we're gathering and who's gathering it, and make sure that we do so. And I really, I really liked what Mike, what Mark had to say in terms of spirit of partnership, absolutely with him. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dean?
Yeah, I think Peter was ahead of me, Corinne. I'm sorry, Shereen.
No, you are, your hand went up first.
All right, thank you. Well, I, I would echo what Jeff just said. I know Jeff has worked on this with you, and just reading the materials, obviously, there's some different perspectives between the two towns about the data that has been collected thus far. So, I think it's important that we move toward a, a more common focus in, in collecting the data. And I like the idea of extending the agreement for a year, and meeting in, sometime in the fall, after our common teams have, have compiled the data, and, and then we can make some decisions about the following year, so whether some adjustment might be needed even in the current year. But I'm, I'm very much agreeable to trying, to trying to pursue this in, in a partnership manner. I think that's what we've tried to do. I think both boards have tried to do that, and I think it's important that we continue in that, in that spirit. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, Peter?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and, and thank you, Mark. I, I too agree with my, my fellow select board members, and, and I appreciate the, the comments that, that Mark made, and, and the partnership approach that, that I think both, both boards want. My, my comment has to do with, I'm glad to hear that, because sometimes what's presented in the press is not exactly the intent of what's, what each individual may say or do. From my perspective, we, we need, we need a lot more information on how we want to proceed. I applaud you for trying to do an enterprise, kind of a, a approach for your, for your, for the parks. So, I, I would, I would say almost exactly the same thing. I think we should hold our feet to the fire. We do, we, we should have a, something, a preliminary, a preliminary proposal by October, November, and I'd say, make, make us try and come to, to an agreement sometime in December, if we can. And I would, I would say that because we need more, I, you're not going to have perfect data, but, but we need more information, so that we can understand the business case against what you want to do, and what makes sense for us, because that'll be the only fair way we'll, we can decide. You know, we, we're talking about opinions on, on a scare, a scarcity of data, and, okay, I, I get it, but, you know, I, I think this is something that needs to be worked at at a professional level, and then, you know, then, then we may have to throw in a little policy after that. So, thank you very much. I, I wholeheartedly agree, but I, I think we should have a strict timeline, and, and a proposal that both, both boards and, you know, I have been, have been available and seeing over a period of time, not just at the end. Okay? Thank you.
Great. Mark, do you want to have any of your board weigh in on this at all?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say, you know, one thing, I, I certainly appreciate the comments that your board members have made, and I think it, it bodes well for us to, to be looking at how we can come up with a system as, as we go forward, and, and I agree with everything that was being said in terms of, let's, let's do this, let's be able to meet on a regular basis, and then formulate an agreement in the not-too-distant future, so we, we're not doing it at the last minute a year from now. So, thank you so much for that. Members?
Looks like MAF is his hand up.
Yep, I was going to say, members of our board, MAF, go ahead.
I just wanted to, again, say that, yes, I think that we should be able to figure this out relatively easily, and, and what we lack is, is data. And Nate will know that I've been trying to work on improving the data collection for a while, and progress has certainly been made, and we, and we have data now, but it's not, I think, enough. And, and if, if you were going to ask me what I envision, the first is that at the booth in Orleans, I, I think, I think manually checking the box, you know, checking the list is, is a, is sort of a funny thing to be doing in this day and age, when we have license plate recognition, and it could be all be automated, and the count could be done for 12 months of the year, and not for three or four months of the year. And the, the problem of recognizing how many people use the Chatham end is a little bit, is a little different, but I think that we, we need to make more progress on the data collection, and once that's reached the point that we can really use it, then, then the rest should be easy, because it is all, it is all, I think, usage-driven.
So, MAF, are you suggesting that the booth does a vehicle count every, on every car that hits the beach for the summer?
Absolutely. No, for 12 months of the year.
And how would that be framed up? Would it be framed up by just permit holder, permit holder by town, permit holder by permit type?
I don't know exactly how the technology would work, but I'm told that this is all, that the data, at least in Orleans, that's entered in as a license, includes the license plates for every permit. So, license plate recognition should be able to distinguish between who's an Orleans resident, who's a non-resident, who's a Chatham resident, and, and do it in an automated way, so we're not, we're not, you know, checking on a clipboard as.
Do you have that, do you have, do you have that technology now?
No.
No, okay.
I'm, I'm suggesting that we should get it.
Oh, to go forward? Okay. All right.
Thank you, Matt. Kevin?
Yeah, I just, I'll come back a little bit out of the technology realm, although I do support, as much as we can do on efficiency, I think, as Mark indicated at the beginning, we are entering this new world of what I'll call this full disclosure with the enterprise fund. It has a certain amount of risk to it, in terms of acceptability by our voters, which fingers crossed that we've done a good job to explain what we are doing, what we're not, including the fee increase needs. But I, I just love the spirit of what we've all heard and shared. I think, just to kind of recap too, for anybody listening, Orleans did suggest just an added whereas clause, that really memorializes the spirit that we want to continue to work together. Parties commit to collecting and sharing data to achieve our mutual goals. So, I think we really do come at it exactly the way I've heard you folks, and I did make notes. Member Kokolos, I've got right in my notes, October, November, we'll get back together with a goal to get an agreement by December. That's going to be burned in my calendar, so you've got my commitment.
Okay.
Andrea?
I'm having trouble. Let me get the mute off.
You're good.
Oh, great. Thank you. I, it, I would love to see a preamble that ties, as you said, holds our feet to the fire, reference what Kevin just says, but then just insert the sentence that says, "We agree to," or "We aim to meet," or whatever, and have it right in the preamble, so we're sure to follow through. And I, I think it's critical that we follow the lead of our staff, our professional staff, who has recommended how this could work out, and that we also want to protect both of our communities, and do this in a way that we're real stewards, both financially and environmentally.
Okay. I guess my question is, what kind of data do we need to collect? Let's lay it out, and find out what we need going forward, and then have, and see if we can identify some, who would want to work on this as a, like a, a board representative with staff, you know, collectively between the two towns, and see if the, the resources are there, see if the town managers are okay with that kind, requesting that resource of their time, and, and then nail out the timeline. And I think that, I think we, you know, I love the idea of having an intention baked into this agreement, that reflects the flavor and the color of, of, of where we're at. I think it will help set, set the tone going forward, and, and the accountability, as you had said, Kevin, would be there as well. So, just throw it out there, is what kind of data does staff need to, in order, what kind of data do we need to address some of the cost concerns, the payment schedules, fees, et cetera? And I know MAF has said that year-round counting is key to this. It looks like Nate's hands up, so.
Thank you. Go ahead, Nate.
Thank you. You know, I'm coming out just the more I get my head wrapped around it, with a little bit different mentality. If we can, the be, as dynamic as the beach is, the usage and the different types of users that are going to be in different areas on the beach is going to change from year to year. I think a true partnership, we have to come at this with good faith, that our budgets are accurate, and what it costs to manage our section of the beach. And if we're going to do any type of analysis, we should be probably working together to make sure that whatever it's costing each town to run their program is accurate. And if that's the case, then we should have confidence in each town, that they're doing everything they can to minimize the closures and provide access to the beach. Therefore, there's not as much data to be collected, because we're all in this together to get the beach open, regardless of what section of the beach the user goes to. And if we have accurate, accurate analysis, and, and a comprehensive look at the budgets it takes to run each program, then we can look at what percentage of that budget should be paid for, non-resident revenue. And if we come at it from that angle, I think, I feel like it'll be more fair and equitable, and less of a border war, draw the line in the sand, trying to figure out who's using which beach more often, and we're all in this together. Just food for thought.
So.
Okay.
Shereen, just one of the thoughts I had had was that maybe if we can. Shereen, just one of the thoughts I had had was that maybe if we can, um, if we agree this evening that we wanna extend the agreement for a one-year period, and, and within that timeframe, we really wanna get a handle on all of this stuff, that, that the subgroup, whatever way we wanna label it, should start meeting, um, relatively soon, and that the, the parameters of, of, you know, what data do we need to collect, and how are we gonna collect it, and when are we gonna collect it, should be certainly one of the primary topics of, of discussion right away, so that we can try and set up some process of, of, of doing that, um, as quickly as possible, uh, knowing that we don't have, as, as Mep said, we don't have the technology in place right now, nor do I know if we could fit it into our budgets in any way, shape, or form, but I think if, if our working group is able to come up with what we can do most efficiently this summer, utilizing the resources of both towns, to get as accurate a picture as we can about beach usage, usage, and as Nate said, not worried about, you know, where people are going, or how many people are going, or, or whatever, town by town, but for the, the whole resource itself. If we can collectively start to, to gather as much information as possible, and then, uh, agree that we will have that subgroup, subcommittee, uh, report back at, um, whether it's once a month, or whether we, we report back in September, uh, to see how the summer went, and then again, uh, at the end of October, maybe, to see how the fall went, so that the boards, the full boards, and the citizens are kept apprised of what it's looked like, um, over the course of, of the summer and the, in the fall seasons on the beach. And then, uh, when we meet in, as, as I think Dean and Peter both talked about, uh, meeting in, in October, November, or November, December, and having an agreement hammered out by the end of December, that we should be able to do that, if, if we, um, put in the, the effort this summer and this fall. So, uh, I think the first task of that subgroup would be to determine, you know, what, what data can we collect efficiently now, uh, with the resources that we have, and what's important kind of data to collect now with the resources that we have, that'll help us, uh, map out the plan for the future.
And I think that that's a board policy discussion and decision to make, moving forward, obviously, um, in, in, in partnership with the budget, um, and, um, so, yeah, no, that's fine, I, you know, I agree with you. Um, I'd love to hear from Dr. Duncanson what his thoughts is on this, because of, uh, you know, he's the one that's, uh, has worked our program with, uh, Mr. Whitman.
Yep.
As well. I don't know if he's still on or not. Dr. Duncanson, do you have a moment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here, Shereen. I've just been listening to, to all the various comments. Um, you know, I, I, I don't disagree with anything that's been said. Um, I think one of the things that we do have to keep in mind, um, is, you know, in reality, the, the two beaches are very different. Um, you know, for the most part, Orleans is be, uh, beach where they have bird issues is relatively small compared to the Chatham area. Uh, you know, I know there, there's been comments made, and especially in, recently in the press, um, you know, that, that, um, and I'm being politically correct here, um, you know, that implied that maybe Chatham wasn't doing enough to get our beach open as quickly as possible. Um, and, you know, I, I would disagree with those kind of statements, and I think it's just really a reflection of the fact that, uh, you know, the beaches are very different. Uh, we have much more area that's, that's plover habitat, we have lease turns that we've had to, to deal with in various years, uh, which haven't been issues in, in other areas. Uh, and, and so that's, that's important, and that's one of the reasons why we've been working very diligently, um, in recent years to get the birds in and out as quickly as we can. Um, you know, we've had a very successful exposure program that Paul Whitman has, has championed, and has been running very successfully the last couple of years, um, so we don't have to deal with re-nest issues, um, because we all know that re-nests simply, you know, extend the closure period. Um, obviously, you know, if it's a storm-related event, we can't deal, you know, we, we can't do anything about that, but in terms of what we can control, uh, we have done that very effectively, and better and better every year that we've been doing it. Uh, you know, honestly, last year, we were lucky, the lease turns were not the issue that they were the year before, um, and there's unfortunately no way to predict from year to year, um, you know, how impactful that's gonna be to our ability to, you know, to get the beach open, um, you know, as quickly as we can, you know, we, every year, we look at what's going on, we alter trails, you know, we close some exits to keep people out of certain areas, and, and we try to get the beach open as quickly as we can. Uh, you know, so that's, that's one issue where there is a, you know, some difference between the communities. Um, in terms of data for beach usage, I, I agree. I think getting a subgroup together quickly to look at that issue, uh, you know, honestly, it's, it's very easy to collect data at the buggy booth, because that's the choke point. Everybody on and off the beach has to go through that location, um, and Orleans, you know, basically manages it 24 hours a day in the, over the summer. Uh, when you get down to the Chatham area, the town line, you know, I've been talking with our staff about, you know, what, what could we do there realistically? Um, and, you know, the idea of the plate readers has been, has been broached, um, you know, could we do the same kind of technology there? It's a little different than doing it at the buggy booth, because, you know, at least there, you've got a building, and electric, electricity, and everything else, um, and there's somebody there, you know? If we put a plate reader down at the town line to really get accurate data on who's coming into Chatham, uh, you know, we'd probably have to look at some kind of solar power. Um, and then, you know, the bigger concern is simply vandalism, um, you know, because we wouldn't have a person, uh, there keeping an eye on it 24 hours a day, seven days a week, you know, for the summer, so. And I'm not saying those are insurmountable issues, but there, those are the kind of issues in terms of, you know, improving the data collection that we'd all have to be aware of and look at. Uh, you know, we are, we did do data collection last year, after we reopened the beach in August, um, to, to start that process. We've already talked at the staff level about how to improve on that, um, this year, potentially through the hiring of additional people, that basically would be at the town line, you know, seven days a week, um, you know, checking people in, basically, if they wanna come into Chatham. Um, you know, and we've talked about having to put up a little shed or something, just to provide some, some cover, so all those kinds of things, you know, are issues that we would have to talk about and discuss, um, to see whether or not, you know, it makes sense to go to all that effort for the type of data, um, you know, that we're collecting, or do we just rely on the data collected at the buggy booth? Um, and I texted Nate a few minutes ago and said, you know, "Do you guys have the capability to produce reports on a monthly basis?" Uh, you know, right now, we're not really getting any data from Orleans, um, unless we ask for it, which we, you know, we have on occasion, um, but if, you know, if they have the capability to produce a monthly report, that then we could share with everybody, the working group or whoever, that said, you know, "Here's the breakdown of everybody coming through the buggy booths." Uh, you know, Orleans resident, Chatham resident, self-contained, whatever, uh, you know, what that doesn't do unfortunately is then tell us how many of those different categories end up in Chatham. So, you know, for us, we'd have to decide whether or not it's important to continue to, to collect that data, or do, you know, as indicated, do we just simply manage the beach based on the holistic approach, um, and then honestly come up with some other way, um, you know, to deal with the revenue split? Um, you know, 'cause I think that's where we've had the, you know, the, the kind of hang-up the last couple of years in our discussions, is, you know, how do we justify the split of the non-resident revenue? Um, you know, right now, it's 75/25, that's the way it's been the last couple of years. Um, you know, last year, we were asked to put together some, some data to see whether or not 75/25 made sense, um, based on the data that we collected, you know, it looked like it might need some adjustment, but I think those are the kind of questions we need to, to work out with a smaller group, um, to come up with some answers for the short term, um, you know, recognizing that we're already at May 1st, um, but I think we could probably do some things quickly, um, to help improve the information for both sides.
Okay. Thank you. Looks like Nate's hands up. I, I don't know if he had something he wanted to add or not, Mark.
I, I was just gonna ask Nate if that's an old hand or a new hand.
It's an old hand, but I'm, I'm always happy to talk, so. Um, yeah, Dr. Bob, spot on. The, the thing I struggle with is, you know, I try to look at it as if myself or, or Dr. Bob was running the whole beach. His people are doing the same thing my people are doing out there. He has different challenges, and those challenges are gonna change from year to year. There's gonna be years when I have turns all over the place, and I'm struggling to get open. It's really hard to do a, a revenue split based on annual challenges that are presented on a certain section of this beach as we move forward, because it's gonna, it's gonna be so different every year. And you can look at the profile of the beach in Orleans, or the shorebird issues in Chatham right now, and that's gonna be different significantly, significantly every year. If we look at the beach and we combine the two budgets at one, as one, and then we separate out a percentage for Chatham, that's the, the cost of the program, the percentage, the cost to run Orleans, and we have an accurate idea of, of, of what those are, I think it's a better way of looking at the beach than where, where people are actually going out onto the beach. Um, what I don't wanna do is make the program cost more money by putting people out to collect data that may or may not be, the whole idea is we're trying to keep this program, uh, we're trying to minimize the deficit here, not make it more expensive to run the program. The program's already incredibly expensive. As far as license plate recognition goes, we have that in the plans for the new entrance in Nassau Beach, and we're, we're going through, um, design and, and permitting right now, the designs are actually almost complete, and we'll be looking at construction of that parking lot in the near future, where we're gonna have the technology to gather all this data, uh, in real time. So, I think the future is bright for that, it's not gonna happen overnight, and I don't wanna, you know, jump into it, and, and I wanna do it right and do it once, and I think we're on track for that.
Thank you. Bob, your hand was back up again. Is that an old hand or a new hand?
No, it's, it's a new hand, just to, to follow up on, on Nate's comment about, you know, the split being based on the town budget, or the, the budgets for the, you know, the respective town beach operations. Um, you know, I, I don't disagree with that approach, I think however, because, you know, Nate's absolutely correct that, you know, beach conditions change over the course of days, weeks, months. I would be reluctant to potentially say to you, "Let's base it on the proposed budget, you know, beach management budget." Um, just because, you know, we put together a budget in November for the following year, um, and we based it on certain assumptions, but, you know, we don't know until June and early July, how many birds we're gonna have, where they're gonna be, how many turns are we gonna have, and all those kinds of things. So, you know, it, it may be the kind of thing where, when the boards or the, the working group meets in September, say, you know, after we've already gone through the summer, and we know, you know, what the beach conditions have been like, and what the management costs have really been, that that may be a more appropriate time to then, to decide how the revenue gets split, as opposed to saying, you know, upfront, "We're gonna do it X, Y", you know, when we don't really know what the costs are gonna be. You know, like I said, last year, our costs were, were relatively low, um, compared to what they could have been, because we didn't have to implement an HCP, and we didn't have to deal with turns. You know, if we go into this year, and we implement the HCP for plovers, and then we have a lot of turn issues, our costs are gonna be significantly higher. So, you know, to me, I'm thinking it may make more sense to think about that in the fall, as opposed to something now. Anyway, just a thought.
Okay. Um, Andrea Reed?
Uh, thanks. Let's see, have I unmuted?
Yes. Now you're muted again, so you need to unmute. There you go.
Good. This is the beautiful part about crafting something like a, like an enterprise fund, or thinking about it holistically. You can build in those kind of, uh, financial safeguards for the both communities, where you would start off with your best guess, and into the season, you would release funds based on costs accrued, and, and really design it as a, as a flexible and responsive instrument. We may have to seed a first year, depending on how we set this up financially, but I think that it's worth a shot, because we all know this is gonna be a dynamic situation, and, and we wanna, we wanna be fair and responsive, because each town may be in a different position from year to year.
Thank you. Peter? You're muted, Peter, please unmute.
Sorry. Uh, I, I, Andrea said what I was gonna say first, so I won't have to say that again. And the second part is, I, I think, and this is, this may be a more sticky point, but I think it has to be considered, and that's, when I said business case, there's two sides to that. There's the cost, and then there's the, the, the income and the revenue that comes in. And, and, uh, just to base it on just a budget, I think, y- you have to consider revenue, and, and what are the requirements for each town, and what are each of you, each of us trying to do, and you're trying to do an, uh, enterprise, uh, fund, and, and so I, I, I believe that, that that has to be considered in the, in this whole equation. I won't tell you how to do it right now, but, but I, I just don't want it to be forgotten. Thanks. I don't think it will be, but.
Well, let's, let's sort of bring this back home for a second and figure out, um, you know, we, we understand that we have, um, several, um, avenues of discussion on data collection, policy, budget, um, and a timeline. Um, now we gotta talk about, I think, maybe who'd wanna step in and, and be part of that working group progress, uh, process, process. Um, in Chatham, um, Jeff Duncanson and I have been serving as somewhat of an ad hoc, uh, subcommittee, um, for the lack of having a, a, a town committee with town folks that are part of our North Beach Committee, so we've been working with Dr. Duncanson, um, regularly, um, on this, and meeting as we have, um, on, you know, whenever we, whenever possible, so, um, Jeff and I have, have been doing that, but that does not preclude that anybody else on my board might wanna step up and take an interest in, in, uh, working on this, um, um, since I have a lot on my plate, I'm just saying. But if anybody on my board is willing to, uh, take the lead on this, it'd be great, uh, to work with Dr. Duncanson. Uh, if not, then I'll, I'll concede to it, but, um, that's my thoughts. Um, is it your thought, Mark, to, um, that Orleans to have like a one, one representative from the select board, or are you thinking to have two, um, from each select board?
We, I don't think we've, we've had that discussion. I, I'm, I'm not opposed to having two, if, if there's somebody else that's interested, I certainly would, you know, the way we have our boards set up, uh, in terms of a chairman of the select board is a different person than the chairman of the park commissioners, so it kinda makes the, the job a little easier for the chairman of the park commissioners to, to be involved in something, and I'd certainly be willing to do that, and, uh, if you wanna have two board members from each town, I think that would make sense, because it gives us a little more, uh, diversity in terms of, of, uh, viewpoints perhaps, or expertise that's available to us in different scenarios. Uh, a couple of board members from each town, and, and, uh, the natural resources people from each town. I don't know if the, if the town administrators wanna, uh, be involved at that level, or, or at what point we, we add them, uh, as a resource for consultation or part of the working group. I think we, we'd have to ask them, or, you know, what your thoughts on that might be.
Um, I'm fine working internally with the, our resource director, um, and I think that he reports regularly to the town manager, and I'm sure that she would weigh in if, if felt necessary. Um, we do, we would do, obviously do an update to our board for any approval on any of the process going forward, uh, before we'd have our obvious, our joint committee. Jeff's hands up, I'm gonna let him speak to this. Jeff?
Yeah, it's, uh, Shereen, I'm certainly willing to continue and, and as a member of the subcommittee. I'd love to have somebody, I'd love to have somebody else, knowing that, you know, our plates are pretty full.
Right.
But I'm more than happy to continue. Look forward to it. Look forward to a meeting, you know, sooner rather than later. So that when we have, when we try to organize what kind of information we think we want, we certainly take advantage of the season upcoming, so I think we need to meet pretty soon.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. If nobody else is willing, then I'm happy to do it, and not doing it by default. I probably have the background to do it. But I guess our next step is what we should do to extend the agreement. Maybe we vote. Your thoughts, Mark? Should we vote? I don't wanna be pushing this along too much, because I know that we, you know, want to be able to have the natural resource department and the two select board members of each town meet and sort of formulate their, how they're gonna craft this, based on our conversation, if we're good with that now, rather than reiterating a bit of it. But I think what we need to discuss tonight is, are we willing to sign an extension on the present agreement as it stands to extend it beyond April 30th to the end of the year? I guess that's where I'm at right now. Yeah, go ahead, Mark, and then Jeff.
I was just gonna say, I think if I can just get a consensus of our board in terms of putting together the working group that would start as soon as possible on this, that would be a couple of select board members and our natural resources people. We, I mean, we don't have to pick the people right now, but we're in agreement going that route for the... I'm seeing heads nod, so we're good with that. And then I think, yeah, we would very much like to be able to come to an agreement tonight for going forward for the next year, and we can talk about what we think needs to be in that to get us through from now until April 30th of 2022.
Okay, so I guess from my understanding, I was thinking we were going to extend this agreement and then look at it in December for a renewal. But I guess if one year works, then we'll do a one-year review. I think that, I mean, if you wanna go one year, I guess I'm fine with that.
You know, I think one of the things that I've been involved with for the last two years is as we've negotiated contracts for the role of the Nauset Education Assistant Employees with the school district is that, you know, because of COVID, and you correctly alluded to the point at the beginning of the meeting, that we kinda were going down this road a year, year and a half ago, when COVID interrupted the whole process. And so, you know, we've just kinda like extended the agreement with the understanding that when we are able to get together and arrive at our new contract language and whatnot, that we can then implement it from that point forward. So I don't know if the two boards would just put it in place for one year, but with the intent in the full determination of having a new, longer-term agreement ready to go by, you know, December sometime.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. If that works out, I'm fine with that. Your point, we're well taken, in understanding that this process has been delayed, and if we can do a year, that'd be great. Jeff, your hand's up. I don't know if that's old or new.
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Okay, John, it looks like you're town managers.
John? So there's already a provision on page three under annual review. So perhaps the boards might want to insert in the first line where it says "The Orleans and Chatham Boards of Selectmen shall meet annually." Why don't we take out annually and put honor before October 30th? And then that way, you're gonna commit to a date. Well, between Joe and I, we'll schedule the meeting, and then we can have the reviews of the subgroups and put together a framework for the following year, so we aren't waiting until the end of April to do it. So that would be a very simple amendment, and, you know, this was done at a time when we had a multi-year agreement, so it's a one-year agreement, so to meet annually doesn't make sense if you might as well put a specific date in there.
Okay, great, great point, John. Thank you. Dean, and then Kevin? Dean?
Thank you, Shereen. I was looking at the same provision that John just cited, and I think that's a good suggestion. I do note that in the last sentence, it allows implicitly for the agreement to be amended by agreement of both parties. I guess I wanted to ask, since it was raised earlier, and it was raised in the memo from John to the park commissioners, is Orleans still looking to make additional changes to the agreement? Or are we gonna go forward as is with, just with the change that John made, which I think probably is satisfactory at this point to me, but maybe some others might feel differently? Because you were talking about a preamble, and there's also some language for a new paragraph 10. I'm not myself thinking that either is necessary at this point, but perhaps those would be for the future agreement. I'm looking at a memo that stated April 21st.
And I see what you're talking about here, Dean, and I think that, yeah, that's a question. I mean, because we have made that commitment, I think, tonight to be working on this, I'm not sure we need to memorialize this in our one-year agreement, if that's what we enact tonight. But I don't wanna be presumptive and speak for the rest of our board.
Okay. Kevin has some thoughts, too, Mark, if you're...
Yep, Kevin?
Yeah, I agree with Dean in terms of, you know, minimum absolute necessary. It's just that one paragraph that Mr. Kelly referred to, but there was something that, I think, for posterity, even if it's a short duration, I would be fine with having us agree and direct our respective town manager, town administrator, just to insert that clause, as Dean referred to the memo from Mr. Kelly dated April 21st. It just reads, you know, "In the spirit that we agree to continue to work together." I also do agree, no need to get into the minutia of adding item 10 under the responsibilities. That could definitely be worked out more at the subcommittee level and come back to us. But I just think to recognize, you know, our dialogue this evening. It speaks well to working together. It causes no difference to the obligations, and it's something we can look back on as a success.
Okay. Matt, and then Jill?
And I'm fine with this approach as well. I just wanted to ask Nate whether he's fine with it, before we become too presumptuous here.
Go ahead, Nate. Unmute Nate, please. Unmute Nate, please.
I knew I wasn't gonna do that, sorry. I think the elephant in the room is our proposed significant fee increases possibly coming June 1st. So when we're talking about 25% of the non-resident revenue, it's gonna be substantially different if it gets past the town meeting and we make these fee increases. So there might be, you know, I think you might need to acknowledge at least that, and I'm sure you all have thought of that, but is there a cap that we'd like to look at this? I mean, the reason, the reasoning and the incentive for us to make these fee increases was to close the deficit on our program in Orleans, and they were crafted just for that. So, I mean, this is gonna impact that process, and that enterprise that we're moving forward on. So I just wanted to bring that up. I also have just a minor edit to page one under responsibilities, under three, registration-related procedures, under C on that, it's the maintenance of records. What I would like to do is just add at the end of that sentence, the sentence reads, "Maintain accurate records of vehicles registered in Chatham, including the names of respective owners, and provide information to other town." I'd like to add, "Within 24 hours of permit issuance." And I'd like to do that for both Orleans and Chatham. We do have a database out on the beach where we pull up vehicle information, and if there's any delay in us receiving that information, significant delay, say up to multiple days, we won't have any information regarding the vehicle that's out on the beach if the other town was the one that registered the vehicle. And it can be just as easy as giving them, I think Chatham has access to our database for sticker tracker, not at administrative level, but they can go in there and look at the information. And if Chatham was able just to email us anytime they registered vehicles and issued permits, we would have that information to add to the database.
And that's something that's important for this year, is what you're, it's a timeliness issue for you, Nate, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Is that a resource, is that possible to be able to do that from our perspective?
Yeah, I believe so. Nate and I had talked about this previously. So, yeah, we'll just have the sticker off as soon as we issue a permit. We'll just scan it and email it over to Orleans, so, yeah, we can make that happen.
Okay. All right. There's hands still up, but I'm not sure if they're up from prior, and that's John, Kelly, and Nate's hand's still up, but that's all I see. Jill, you had your hand up a few minutes ago, but took it down. I guess you're satisfied with some question that was answered.
Thanks. I was gonna go sort of down the same track as Nate, is to make sure that there weren't any other amendments that were needed to the other sections of the agreement. And then, and I was, I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear on the preamble. We talked about the parties agreed to work together, but as it's written in the April 21st memo, it says, "Whereas parties desire to assess the cost of running these programs on Nauset Beach to make each town whole, the parties commit to collecting and sharing data necessary to achieve this goal." So this, for us, this resource is somewhat subsidized. We're not looking necessarily to be whole, though in town manager stuff, just the technicality of the words. Certainly working together, but I just wanted to put that out there. The boards were looking at including it as-is, or if you were making any amendments to that one preamble clause.
Well, let's quickly, go ahead, Jeff.
Why don't you just strike to make each town whole?
Yeah.
She just striked it.
That works.
Yeah, from the Orleans perspective, you know, we don't wanna be presumptive in speaking for Chatham or whatnot. I think this was just a, I think we were looking at what we were trying to accomplish with our enterprise fund and suggesting that Chatham down the line may have the same idea, may have different ideas, and so we don't wanna be presumptive in what Chatham wants to do. And so the notion of just working cooperatively is basically what we're looking for.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Any other, any other changes that we need to make to the document this evening before we move forward?
Well, so just a question from my part, and for, you know, because Nate alluded to it in terms of not knowing what's gonna happen in our own town meeting in terms of increasing the cost of the stickers and whatever, and that as we, as we work through in the long-term agreements, that Orleans, just because of the expenses that we have, and what we're looking to do, as I said before, with a number of different operations in the town, not just the beach, but being able to track and see exactly what it costs us to run a program. We don't wanna be stuck in a quagmire of like raising fees and then having, you know, to help reduce our deficit, and then having to pay out many of those fees in order to increase the operational cost of that program, you know? So we're kinda walking the fence here. We don't know all the things that we don't know yet, and we won't know until we see whether town meeting lets us pass those fees, and then how we can best utilize them to be efficient and run the thing. So I guess I'm just looking to see that everyone agrees that we need a little flexibility in this first year in terms of how this all works out, and if, you know, the revenues don't come in like we were hoping they might come in, or if a lot of them come in and we have to give some of them, more of them, you know, to Chatham, or if we have to pay out the cost of it, I think both the town of Orleans and Chatham needs to understand this is new and different, and we gotta figure out how it's all gonna work, if it does work.
And so if your proposed fee raises come to fruition with your town meeting, that means your fiscal year, what you're fiscal in July, then the fees will be changed at that time?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're looking at a six-month, that you might have different revenue. So maybe we look at, understanding the flexibility of this, also looking at resolving the financial piece of this, you know, in a timely fashion, not, you know, maybe not, you know, maybe we come back and hopefully at the end of the year or something, say, okay, maybe we can sign this agreement, you know, come to an understanding and sign it early, or change the date on it, or be flexible in that manner, if that helps.
Yes.
To sort of, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, this is, we're trying to be cooperative and work together here. We need to understand this is a business partnership and relationship, and all aspects of that need to be considered. But we don't wanna, this is not a hardball thing. This is, you know, trying to work together. That's what I'm hoping, that we're on the same page. But, you know, it is, we do have business to tend to together. Dean, your hand's up.
Yeah, my understanding that, correctly, that that discussion would be part of the agenda for the meeting in October? Is that what we're talking about? So that, let's say, the fee increases go into effect on July 1 in Orleans, and Orleans, and the result is a significant increase in the revenues, and Orleans feels, for reasons that they feel are legitimate, that there should be some adjustment. Is that, I know in October, we're not gonna have a full year's worth of data. We're just gonna have the summer and early, early fall. But is that what we're talking about, that that would be part of the discussion in October for purposes of making any interim adjustment to the agreement, or for purposes of the agreement that would be in place for the following year? I'm just trying to understand what we're gonna be voting on tonight.
That would be my assumption, that we'd be working out all of that within the working group to present back, because that's the biggest sticking point of all of what we're discussing. So I think we really need to get down to that, and on a level where we can talk about it, you know, back and forth in a group and bring it back. John's got his hand up, and then Jill. John?
So if we sell all the stickers for the season before July 1, the revenue will be the same as, you know, last year in terms of the rates. But there is a provision in here that Orleans is required to pay Chatham by September 30th. So if there's gonna be any type of discussion in October, then that September 30th provision, which is under number three, revenue distribution on page four, that September 30th date should be changed to allow that discussion to take place.
Jill?
Yeah, same section, or have a meeting before September 30th to hammer out what those revenue distributions would be.
Could I propose, maybe this would help us, because again, we're kinda looking at trying to figure out all the things that we know and all the things that we don't know. First of all, we need to, I don't wanna belabor something that might turn out to be moot if the taxpayers in Orleans choose not to increase the fees. But if they do, then I think if we have our working groups looking at getting accurate data on usage, you know, the whos and the wares, and how many, and whatever, during the course of the summer, we can look at what the revenues... we can look at what the revenues really do produce if the, the new fees go into effect, how that affects the revenue, whether, you know, some people may choose not to get a sticker or others may just say, you know, I'm going to get it. I don't care how much it costs. But I think if we, if we were to take the revenues from, you know, June, July, August, and then our working group is working throughout the summer and we come into September, we'd at least have some, I think some understanding of what direction this whole thing may be going in so that we could entertain an appropriate and relevant discussion in October about whether we need to change how the revenues are distributed or whatever. So, you know, as I said, I just moved into a, you know, a major discussion, not knowing what's going to happen at town meeting and not knowing what's going to happen over the course of the summer. I'd hate to see us waste a lot of time and effort on something that turns out to be moot. So best orchestrate this so that we can get as much information and data as possible and then deal with the revenue sources in the, in the sharings and whatnot in the fall.
Okay. Dr. Bob, Dean, then Jeff.
Yeah, I was just going to say, yes, there is that clause that John Kelly pointed out about the payment coming to Chatham by September 30th. But I believe and I don't have the form in front of me. I think it was only in the last, say, two months that we received $75,000 from Orleans. So I don't think we've been, either town has been totally, you know, sticking their nose to the grindstone on that particular clause. So I, I just don't consider that a big potential stumbling block, if you will. So, anyway.
Dean?
Just as an aside, whatever, whatever you do with the month, the year has to be changed to 2021. I was just, I was just going to say for the record, and I, it's just in terms of full disclosure, fair disclosure, I don't think there should be any assumption by anybody that, that Chatham would necessarily in the fall. And we will look at these things honestly and fairly and in partnership. But I don't think there should be any assumption as to which way we might be coming down. Because, I mean, Orleans, at least from the park commissioner's perspective, as I understand it, has, has made the determination that you'd like to go in the direction of eliminating taxpayer subsidies and, and having these self-funded. We still at our end have the subsidy of the taxpayers. So we're, there's, there's taxpayer money, there's, there's Chatham taxpayer money going toward the, the cost of maintaining the program at our end. So I think that's just something I don't want to lose sight of. And I don't mean to throw any kind of monkey wrench into this because I think we're moving toward a good process here. And I, I really want to be very cooperative and, and hear what, you know, the subgroup has to say after you've analyzed the data that's been compiled.
Okay, thanks.
Get that out.
Thank you Dean.
If I could just respond quickly to what Dean was just saying, and I think Dean, your, your thoughts are what we as a select board have had thoughts about with, with some of these things as well. And we're, we're looking at, well, you know, at what point is something so prohibitive? If you want to try and pay for strictly with a user fee, that you can't do it anymore. You know, we've talked about what happens at Rock Harbor, for instance, in the town of Orleans, which is very small compared to, you know, Chatham Harbor. And we've talked about, you know, gee, you guys have the, the observation deck there and what a travesty it was when that thing was delayed and delayed and delayed. And the tourism industry suffered from it, whatnot, you know? And so we're looking at the same thing at Rock Harbor. If we make the cost of slips so prohibitively high, you don't have a charter fleet and you have, you know, a few wealthy people having cocktails on the stern of the boat. Tourists aren't going to come to look at that. So there's got to be some give and take and some subsidy by the town. And I think what we're looking to do with the enterprise funds, yeah, it's great if we can have all the costs paid for. But if not, we understand some of this needs to continue to be subsidized by the town. We're just trying to think about this first year, what the balance would be. So yeah, there's, nothing's written, written in stone for us with these either.
Sure, thank you, thank you Mark.
Alright, Jeff and then Alex.
Yeah, thanks Shereen. And I just want to echo what Mark said. I really think that, you know, we can't, we shouldn't get ahead of ourselves. They have a vote in, in May. Let's see what, how that vote turns out in May and that'll be another dynamic we have to deal with in the working group. If in fact they, they vote to go with the enterprise fund way. But I think it's kind of, kind of moot at this point. It hasn't happened yet. We need to be thinking about it, should it happen, and how it might affect the agreement. But I think, you know, to prolong the discussion tonight is kind of, kind of a waste of our time.
So just so you know, Alex Halela is our finance director and she's raised her hand to speak. Alex?
Yes, thank you Madam Chair. I just had a question. I heard someone say the revenues from June, July and August, and with the fiscal year ending at the June 30th and the current rates being in place, that was my question, because those are still the current rates without any proposed increases.
Yeah.
Yep. So there are, yes?
Yes.
Nate and then Mep?
On page four, under revenue distribution, we talked about the September 30th deadline for the, the payment to Chatham. It probably should be clarified in the revenue distribution that the 75-25 is the breakdown from the previous fiscal year. Is, you know, sticker sales are always looked at as the 2018 season, meaning we start selling, or 2021 season, we start selling the stickers in, say, March, and we sell them through the, the fall into the off-season. So I, I think I want to clarify that it's the previous fiscal year's sales, if that's the correct interpretation.
Well, stickers based upon the beach season.
I'm still selling stickers after September, John.
No, 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 I, well, I guess that's the question, but I think, I think the way this, it's never been done on a fiscal year.
Well, just so you know, there's still, there's not much left on, on, on the table at that point, but there's still sticker sales going on, off-season sticker sales after September 30th. And that's why I've delayed the payment so that we finalize the season so I can give Chatham accurate.
You're, you're doing it correctly. The, the whole thing is the stragglers that are paying the off-season are the ones that wouldn't necessarily be collected by September 30th. But the intent of what you're doing is the way the agreement has been set up. It's based on the season, the sticker for each season.
I'm glad to hear that. Then if we can push that deadline out so that I can, there is no, you know, window of loss of revenue for either town, I think it would be more accurate portrayal of the breakdown.
Or perhaps have two dates in there. So have, have the, the summer revenue by September 30th and then the off-season revenue by whatever date you just, you know, have it in January or February, whatever. When, when Bob said you made the payment, that seemed to work because you caught all the stragglers.
Correct.
So I think having a second date in there is, would probably be the way to go. That way, Chatham wouldn't be waiting any longer than necessary to get the money to cover the summer expenses.
So what date would that be if we're going to amend that? So we have that baked in to agree upon?
Well, when did you, so Nate, when do you, when do you say?
Why don't we say the end of February?
And that, and that's for off-season?
Yes.
Stickers? And how do we define off-season? After what date?
Do you have a date in the, in the rules and regs Nate, as to when the off-season goes into effect?
I do, but you know, that's sticker office. I'd be guessing at this point, I don't have the date in front of me.
If off-season is, is the term that is related to that, to the, to the beach regs and the sticker, then I guess it would be fine, just as off-season.
So Shereen, maybe if you just say the, the revenue collected between, after September 30th.
Okay.
And then it ties right into that date when it's brought in, that that payment would be made by the end. Would you say it ended February Nate?
Yeah, I mean, so, so once we stop selling the 2020 stickers and start selling the 2021 stickers, I'll give you as the remainder of whatever we made.
Alright, I, we'll have to amend all this and get it back to the boards, but I think we're clear on that. Mep and then Dr. Dunkinson.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the enterprise fund that's being set up in Orleans and the issue of taxpayer subsidy. So our enterprise fund is for the entire beach operation of which the OSV program is part, but not all. And the question of when, when we discuss where we might stand on, on taxpayer subsidy, it's not going to be uniform across the entire beach operations. It's going to be separately considered for the OSV and for the, and for the parking lot, the public beach at Nauset Beach.
Right, okay. Is there any other amendments to the document that we need to discuss prior to sending it off to our respective administrators to work up and then send it back to us?
Paragraph six on that same page, obviously that's the new dates.
New dates, okay.
21 to 2022.
Got it. Do we, go ahead Jeff.
Are we incorporating all the, the language that John Kelly sent over on the 21st, including the preamble with the words omitted to make each town whole?
I think we were just going to add the preamble.
Just the preamble.
Just the preamble at this time.
Good.
We'll take the rest of it into consideration as a working group. Okay, do we want to take a vote as an entity that we've agreed to what we've discussed tonight and that every, that it's going back? Do we need to take that vote, do you think? Or, or we just get a consensus and then Jill's got her hand up. I know she likes, go ahead Jill.
Yeah, I would suggest that the boards each take a vote to extend the agreement for one year with final language to be worked out between administration, if you're comfortable with that. Only because, you know, next time we meet will be after the expiration of the agreement.
Right. Okay.
So moved.
Alright.
Second.
Okay. This is how we end our meetings, we usually. As long as everybody is comfortable with our discussion being finalized and we have a motion on the table, I will take that motion into consideration from my select board. And then I think Mark, you'd have to have a, a motion from your board and then vote. So I'm going to take, go ahead Dean.
When would we sign this Jill?
I think we could get the language incorporated tomorrow. We can probably circulate it for signatures, e-signatures if you're okay, Friday.
Fine with that. Do you want it in the vote that we can do the e-signatures?
Yes, that's always helpful for our.
Amendment to the motion to include e-signatures.
Second, I got that, okay? Alright, I'll take a vote on my board. Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And the chair says aye, so we voted for an absence.
And Mr. Chair, this is Kevin. I will make a motion for Park Commissioners of Orleans, identical to what the previous motion was.
A second?
Right, moved by Kevin and seconded by Andrea. Any other discussion on that? Would that, that includes the e-signatures as well, right Kevin?
Ah, yes.
Oh, okay.
Mark, can I just ask, is that a new hand or an old hand for Nate?
It's been up for a while, I'm assuming it's a, an old hand.
There it is, there you go. Sorry, I'm just getting used to this teams. Apologize. Okay, so the Orleans park commissioners have a motion on the table in front of us. Been moved and seconded, any other discussion? Alright, I'll ask for a vote by roll call. Mep Runyon?
Aye, Mep Runyon.
Kevin?
Aye, Kevin Gallagher.
Andrea?
Aye, Andrea Reed.
And I, Mark Matheson. It's a four zero zero.
So I, I think we've adjourned our business for this evening and I'll accept a motion in a moment. But I do want to say, I thank you. I think this was a really productive exchange between our two communities. And I appreciated the time that we've spent with us tonight and I look forward to working on this agreement and moving forward in the nature, in the spirit of what's, what really is important, that beauty of the beach and how much we all appreciate it and how our, our visitors and our residents do as well. And we just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for each community. So with that, I'm going to accept a motion to adjourn my board.
So moved.
Second. Okay, Dr. Dunkinson, your hand's up in the middle of my motion.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Shereen, if we could get some sense from Orleans as to how soon they will let us know about their two representatives from the committee, that would be helpful in trying to pull together a first meeting.
We will be meeting next Wednesday. And John, can we get that on the agenda and then pick those people next Wednesday and get to Chatham Thursday morning and let you know? And then we can get that.
We could start scheduling.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn Chatham.
You just need a second.
I need a second.
Second.
Take a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And chair says aye.
Alright, I will entertain a motion with Andrea, she's the one that does these things.
So moved, so moved.
Which one's Andrea?
Second.
Second from Mep. All those in favor, Andrea?
Andrea Reed, aye.
Mep?
Aye, Mep Runyon.
Kevin?
Aye, Kevin Gallagher.
And I, Mark Matheson.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll talk.
Right.